He has written.
I know.
Why are you writing?
Those screws in the.
It'll just want some big spike tire.
Yeah, like they do on the ice rasters. Yeah.
Are you recording?
I can't turn it on, but yeah, it's a.
It is eight o'clock. We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. See that we have a lot of public discussion today. We'll skip over that. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes dated November twenty second?
Sold.
I have a motion by law, second by flat. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carried. You want to call Doug?
Well, yeah.
The best part of his.
You want to come up there?
We're not going to pass no one's way around.
Okay.
Today, three to five inches.
I've had enough. They got that diesel.
The pavement was dry?
Yeah. The team was dry. I mean, if there was some stuff coming down, but nothing that was sticking, so.
It's a big thing, additional signs.
I went down by Burnout.
I was going twenty-five miles an hour.
Good morning, everyone.
Was Doug here? So the guy ran into the. Oh, it is. Yeah, that's what you ran into.
Doug, we are up to the trail groomers request.
Uh, yeah. Annually, the, the, uh, two county drift skippers and the Makota snow eagles. Uh, requested groomed trails in the road right away. Uh, they have the same maps as what they, uh, or the same requests what they groomed last year. Both, uh, both of them, they've had their certificate of insurance with us on file, so everything is proper. And, uh, I would recommend that the board would approve, uh, both of these requests.
Hold on.
I got, uh, two separate motions.
Do I have a motion to approve the drift skippers? Motion by Stecker, second by. I'll second it. Any discussion on the motion?
It said the additional signs. They're gonna put more signs right there by, uh, Ram's place?
They do have that on their map as being additional sign. I think there's a couple of spots there.
Because that's where that guy ran into that bridge, wasn't it?
Yeah, there's different signs. There's one right there. I have the drainage ditch, yes.
Same for me.
And that is on the mail up there.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried unanimously. The next motion I need is for the Latoya snow eagles. Motion by Stecker. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Do, uh, we have any discussion about the snow eagles? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carried. Next, we are up to our.
Oh, we could. Doug tells, I'll date those Roger. You're supposed to sign both of them.
Well, just.
Amazing.
Thanks.
Thank you. We are up to get the gap report. Anything to note on that, Tim? I didn't see anything.
No, it's just the annual report. Gap report is the report of the activity that happens between June and July of each year that separates the fiscal years. No, nothing.
Anybody have any questions on the gap report? If not, we're gonna let the record show that we acknowledged it. That there was no discussion. Next, we have the annual urban renewal report for FY twenty-one, twenty-two.
It's for twenty-one, twenty-two, but it reports the cash, cash balance at the end of fiscal year twenty, so it's the balance as of July first of twenty.
Anybody have any questions on the urban renewal report?
The only one we have is the Buffalo.
Right.
Urban renewal, which is set to expire twenty-four.
Yeah, but we'll have the bridge built before then, won't we, Doug?
Sorry.
The bridge on the urban renewal.
Yeah.
Definitely.
It's supposed to. It will expire.
The what will expire?
The urban renewal ends twenty-twenty-four.
But the money will be there.
Yeah.
And then we got for an additional ten years, don't we, on that?
Well, we're gonna have to check into that because the amendment does not specify that. It does not indicate how long that's extended to, so we're gonna have to do some checking on it.
I think you'd better call down to state and get some definite answers.
I thought for the second ten years, you're gonna get it all to be.
So I, and I, I think it was at Hailers and Kenny that did that, or it died.
I don't know.
They, they do stuff like that, but I don't know.
They may have never.
Oh, second, who did it?
Justin, it's turned.
Yeah, and he's retired now.
Niko.
Yeah, it was Niko.
Very good.
Okay.
Joe Myrie is.
Yeah, Joe Myrie is the one that did it.
Yeah, but he's no longer there.
No, he retired, so I don't know who his replacement is. Who?
You know, I don't, it's a female.
Myrtle.
Yeah. I don't know her. I, I've not really gotten to know her at all.
So I'll, I'll call down, check out on that.
Yeah, I'd call her. Kids replace them. Get a answer. Before we make a mistake.
Myrtle Nelson, your name. Uh, phone number six, four, one, four, two, three, zero, four, nine, one, extension two, eleven.
Oh, sorry, I was shooting about that.
Faster this time.
Six, four, one, four, two, three, zero, four, nine, one, extension two, eleven. And I got a fax if you want that. Better name Myrtle Nelson, executive.
Come on in.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Gary.
Thanks.
Did you guys stop in our office, Ray? Chance? No.
Could chose him on my daddy. He knew what was.
You want us? Intercom, intercom, one, zero, two, Lisa. Just say to Gary again, you're up here, on your place.
Yeah, Lisa, Gary.
Got one more winner? Yeah, go through the winner?
Because.
Yeah, I could do a lot of.
Do I have a motion to approve the annual urban renewal report? Sold. Motion by class, second by.
Second.
Stecker. Any more discussion on it? All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carried. Thank you. Get some much discussion. We go by a watch or. Okay.
How are you guys doing, Swann? You're a good one. Yeah. What do you mind me out for? Morning stuff.
On your way there?
I'm playing.
Yeah, we know. I just started. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'm asking.
It happened like the weather. Exactly. Everything.
Weather is only, yeah, it's the reason you're on those. Yeah.
Drive. They're all really quick.
It's really changed, but yeah. Set our side.
Yeah.
Now we can fix it.
They did say. We're on top.
That's normal.
He's like, we're, it's, we're things wet, but give them things to guys. That's also forcing us. One, three, eight.
I'm thinking.
Yeah, they're supposed to be three. Over there.
You can go.
Actually. You're a while.
Yeah, zoom by, can't help. There's one thing.
Wrestling? No, she, Jean wrestling. So just change for. Let's take off. Oh, yes. I'll laugh and say it's a blow.
Right to his butt.
Yeah.
Nice, nice, none of that.
At his time, you know, he grew up.
I don't know. Do you want to just keep these over, over here on the Tanger Rogers?
That's good.
Um, but she said that they were going to stick because he used to be on the circuit. And he hasn't gotten sick around any of the treatments at all, so.
He got. They'll be open soon since the.
Yeah. Yeah, he didn't. I'm pretty sorry, most probably.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I seen Mark did that. I, I, I got that one done. And she's gonna have to call, so. Okay, that's all done. Yeah.
It's still. Never shut. Or not. And we're, and we're like, guys. Yeah, figure it out there. Pull me out there.
Yeah.
I don't want to say the real. I got. Five. Yeah. Smells. Bump five down from there. And they dropped very, very slowly, so. Someone asked the.
That's right.
Please, may I just ask?
Uh. There's just like that. Pause. It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's the worst.
It put everything.
It is eight fifteen.
All right.
Mr. Gates.
That's thirty. Yeah.
Things that you are the longest-term project employee, I think, just about.
Or Trent.
Yeah, Gary, yeah.
It's not up here. Most experience current. Or right out.
You got any words of advice for all the people that might come and get a job?
No, no.
Here, there's a lot.
That's no longer.
Right.
Thanks. Will you give it to us? Could you last forty years?
Forty-three.
That's a long time.
Yeah.
Did you question it?
Forty-two times ten.
For sure. Hey, Eric, I want to thank you very much for your work. And everything you've done. You could stay longer.
Yeah, I know, but it is time.
It's time, man.
It is time.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Eric. We appreciate it. And you're doing good. Evidence.
Four, two, three. Get one more.
Great. Thank you. Hard to believe, Gary.
Well.
You would be like to thank you.
Yep.
Oh.
Lisa. Get, shake your hand, wish you good luck in your retirement. Enjoy it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for all the years.
Thank you.
Good luck, happy retirement.
Doug, no, go ahead and give Danny and I'll get care of. Speak to those that happened. Right, I can, I can, I can tell my hearers.
How many years? You did thirty-one years?
That's got tired.
Thank you, Danny.
Same thing.
Yep.
Right, but you're not reflective to the, uh, CS.
Yeah.
All right, one, two, three. One, two. One, two, three. Right, three, thank you.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Well, that helps that.
You know, you don't have to, you know, if you get the award and then come back again, you know.
It's six months.
Yeah. The Florida, thank you for it.
Thank you. Good luck. Good night. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny.
Yeah, I, I could just say a few words, Clint, you said. Both Gary and Danny, they worked out of our touch. Gary retired in March of seventy-nine. Which seventy-nine for people were around in seventy-nine. That was a bad snow year.
I see.
We started right after, so. Kind of saw the end of it. And all, but that's a benchmark.
I saw that guy's time sheet and saw him ten to twenty hours a day.
Yeah. So anyway, and then Danny, he was hired in, uh, July of nineteen ninety-one. As you said, uh, Gary's got over forty years. Danny's got over thirty years, over seventy years, almost seventy-five years worth of experience combined with Gary Baby, who was over forty, maybe forty-five. We're, yeah, in the last couple of years, we've lost, uh, a lot of experience on the road crew and especially the Titanic shot. Uh, Gary had Buffalo Township, Danny Portland Township, Main River, Stone removal. Uh, they both also worked on tile, driveway construction, kept the roads up, been dependent on maintenance.
So.
We have some road department. I'll say thank you, Gary. Just use no little plaque, no maintainers, and Danny, plaque. Maintainer as well, and wish both of you, uh, Gary, you and Gene, and Danny, you and Renee. Many, many years of happiness and good, good retirement. Good total, good to be guys up there with the class, please, fill our practice.
What, more sectors? Well, we're getting.
We're getting, we're getting both together. Thank you very much.
Yeah, all right. Two, three. Left, or design, right by your three year.
Moves are just.
Think that's. Ten, two, three. We got one more. All right. One, two, three. Gary, thanks.
What for me?
Thank you. Yes. Thanks, yeah. And I'm giving.
What?
Very bad.
Time to retire, stop down in the office. We got a box. That's going over here, a box. Just kind of nurse. Stop down in the office.
Yeah, we have.
Please, we are.
Say the whole. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something to hurry.
It works up a little bit, I think.
It is.
Foreman Goddard, any words of wisdom for them too?
I'll let him get it.
Experience amazing, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Record to acknowledge their retirement and their years of service? Proval construction in the road right away.
There's no request for construction, right, this week.
Any discussion with, uh, county engineer?
Um, I'll just kind of bring you up to date on construction projects. The bridge down there, and they did pour the deck a week ago. So now they'll be working on getting the barrier rail, getting things back, fill dark rail, and then we can open up that bridge, so it's good days. Should be, shouldn't take very long. Bridge up in Lincoln Township, they're pouring a cap last week. And I'm sure when the weather allows, they'll be pouring caps. They're planning on doing it today, but obviously with the weather, that's not working. Um, bridge up Grant Township, section fourteen, that is complete. And Kyle, we are. Working on getting that tile outlet identified.
Okay.
So we should be able to.
Sounds good.
Prepare. And Highway one sixty-nine, bridge opened up, if any. I did not hear that. Uh, we go right before Thanksgiving. And I haven't been over to Highway eighteen. I don't know how the shoulder is going there, but that's gonna be close.
It's our Saturday. Look like it's all done.
Is it?
They got a little roughness to the level off, yeah.
I suppose they got around there.
They would have went to Lake yesterday, but.
Yeah, okay. Both the Lengard wind, the Cessouk wind, they are, uh, replating, uh, their driveways, getting things back and shave that away. Uh, still looking for mechanic applicants, having trouble doing that. Lone Rock getting ready to offer that position. Uh, transfer station, we got some background checks, so after that, we'll be ready to offer, and Titanka, the two positions, Gary and Danny. Uh, we're taking, applications are supposed to be here by Friday, so hopefully we'll get those replaced also. Uh, then I sent out some, uh, the wages. I don't know if you had any more questions on that or, or requests. I did email that to the board. And Friday, we have a drainage district meeting down at Fort Dodge. I'm planning on going down there, however, I'm leaving at noon. I got excellent interviews with Gary and Danny, uh, in the afternoon schedule, so. If anyone would like to ride with me, the problem is I, I'll be leaving before, so just let me know.
You're going. Just checking here.
Planning on it, but I have another meeting the same day too, so I gotta see how that works out.
Other than that, that's kind of all that I have right now.
Anybody have anything for Doug? If not, thank you, Doug.
You got it.
Stick around or, or this is, or he's talked to you.
Like, and I talked to Vincent, they guessed the face.
Okay.
I'm gonna go get.
Yeah.
Construction in the roadway right away.
Did we discussion? I don't know if there'll be a decision.
We've got it. Two more things on the agenda, and then it's on the agenda for granted. It's Saturday. Uh, Jimmy going to be available till ten o'clock. So should we just postpone that?
Until she comes in to see, she said she had.
See, Jane, I don't.
Well, if Donny wants to be here, Donny gonna be here next week.
Nothing's gonna change. We'll talk about it in two weeks. I don't care. We'll see what Mike says when she comes in.
Would say he's not available. Yeah, then, um, I just had a sticky note that said he wasn't available till, I mean.
Okay, boy, what you want to do? It's our next thing on the agenda.
No, we're not gonna be here.
Yeah, I think it needs to be.
We'll have to put it on next week. Uh, Don's not gonna be here.
But I can just bring it up, because, I mean.
Put it on two weeks and get. Yeah, that would sit a definite time. Yeah. Then we have, uh, next thing on the agenda. Get that down for two weeks. We just let the, yeah, just. And show that, let the record show that we postponed it two weeks. And then we'll go to landlord's request for use of spoils on open ditch right away.
Yeah, the one that had talked to me about it was not able to make it for the meeting now, today with the weather, so we'll have to postpone that too.
Okay, we'll go two week, uh, week on that. Is that fine?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I'll check with them.
Next, we'll. Check with him before we put it on the agenda, then we'll.
Check.
We have a change order on DD four on the FEMA repairs. Kyle?
Uh, yes, that's, uh.
That's for the extension?
That is for the extension, yes. That's the, uh, contractor has continued to work, uh, when they, since the snow's been out and they've been able to, um, they were. Continuing to doze, spoil, and level that all out. They're, they were hopeful that they would just have, uh, one section of dozing and then the rubbish, uh, rock pickup. Left for in the spring. I don't see that as being a, a large damage to the district, if any at all. Um, as long as they get out there right away in the spring and get those picked up. They were, they were hopeful of the spring, uh, ten days to two weeks, they should be able to have all of that, all that rock picked up and disposed of.
So I guess my question to you is, do you want to make a, uh, a recommendation to change the completion date, or do you want them to be held responsible and hold the ten percent until? Or do you want them to be held responsible and hold the ten percent until?
Uh, I, I believe if we, my recommendation is to extend that, the completion date. And, uh, because of that, we would hold that ten percent until after the completion date. So we would have the retainage until.
We would maintain that.
Right, yep, un- until that, uh, such time that the, the work is done.
Okay, whatever, either way it works.
Um.
Do you have the change order and make the work all?
Yes, that's all, I believe March has.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, but you have to have a date on when you.
Uh, yeah, same as March fifteenth. And that, that all, we, we spoke with.
That's in the change.
Uh, Leon about the. How that coincides with FEMA dates and it's all well, it's all well within the timeframe. Yeah.
Mark, you have the particulars on that, so we get it into motion correctly? You extended it to.
It's change order. Change order number one.
Okay.
That would, that would be.
To be approved change order. Yeah.
For the motion.
Right, to.
All the other stuff that's in the change order.
Yeah.
For details.
Yeah, hundred and four days, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's moving the completion date from December first to March fifteenth of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Do you think he's gonna have, he's not gonna have the rocks picked up by then either, is he?
Uh, I'm hopeful, i- in discussions with him, we're pretty sure we can get it done by.
Depends upon the winner.
Well.
Yeah.
Essentially, yes. But that's where we have to have it by then because of the FEMA dates right now. Leon is fairly confident that the FEMA, the top date on the projects will be extended because there's more significant projects that are going on that are going to take more time.
In other areas.
In, in other areas that stick yet, not, not in Cessouk County. Um, that would also extend the completion date on this, but at this time, that's about as far as we can go. Uh, and then hopefully we get, uh, some early thaw off. But it's, it's that or they try to do it now, and I think they'll make a bigger mess with ground partially frozen. Trying to do it. It was, it was, and I've said this at, at prior meetings, but just for everyone's information here, it was, uh, a matter of what the amount of spoils that got taken out. To limit crop damages and the amount that they leveled and pushed out in the fields. We waited until after harvest to get a majority of that done. And in waiting, that gave us only essentially November to get all that work completed. And most of November was lost in a couple of storms.
Do I have a motion to approve the change order for DD four? Motion by Stecker, do I have a second? Again, do I have a second to approve the change order? I'll move to approve, or second to motion. Any more discussion? Do you have anything else, Martin?
Do we know how much FEMA money's been paid yet on that project?
Um, I know that FEMA, I know that money's been.
It's, it's been six figures.
It's. Yeah, I don't, Marge, do you have an idea of how much FEMA's paid on?
Probably.
I know that they've been getting.
Two hundred and some this particular project, but overall.
I've been doing. As they come, they have been paying bills.
FEMA?
Yeah.
Um, they submitted some directly for this one, and then it has to get approved through channels and all that to be. Uh, their final payment, and we haven't gotten that yet. But.
That's from.
Right, till this, this is completed.
What amounts have been coming in periodically from?
Yeah. Approximately two hundred thousand on this project.
Okay. Any other questions? Doing done, do a roll call vote on that. Stand.
Stecker?
Yes.
Casey?
No.
Boss?
No.
Class?
Yes.
Jax?
Yes. Motion carried, three to two. Anything else on the FEMA? Martin? Mark, would you send, uh. To McGuire, or an email telling him that this has been extended and he's not going to be able to compensate it for his bridge plank until.
McNerney.
McNerney, there you go. He deserves an email.
Okay.
Next, we are up to Vince's request on Drain four. Request number twenty twenty-two dash old sixty-three on Drain four. And. We are up discussion, Vince, I looked at it and it's in the road ditch. How is it?
I'm just looking for. So. The rate to put the crossing in and it's on the. The counties within their right of ways, so.
Yeah, it's like any other driveway, you're still liable for the pipe.
Exactly.
Yep. Uh, I was gonna say that, my, my, yeah, my Coors did an engineering report that's still valid on that. It's less than ten years old, and they should be able to give you a size without doing much research. Cause we put a pipe in and winners, you know, where winners places? Straight west of the ethanol plant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That'd be a completely different ditch.
Yeah.
Nah, it would be a different ditch.
Different ditch.
Yeah, but that Drain four report should be there yet.
Yeah, it's still.
So, so does the county pay for the engineering that sits in the right of way or not?
Well, other counties pay for the engineering, it relieves the county of the. Any liability if something happens, that's where the engineering comes into play, but it has fun to get across again.
It hasn't been paid by the county in prior situations, so.
Well, I, I don't believe any of them have been in the county's right of way, they believe it.
Oh, it's not completely in the right of way, the edge of the ditch is in the right of way.
Well, how many feet is the right of way for the county?
Doug.
Sixty.
Sixty.
It's a sixty-six foot road, thirty-three feet on each side section.
So we blazered from the center of the road to the far berm on the other side and it's sixty-four feet.
That doesn't work with the measurements, it's sixty-six total. Half it on.
So it'd be thirty-three.
I'm just, I'm just giving you the measurement, not. So. Half the ditch would be in the county's right of way.
So what's your prerogative, Vince, do you wanna hire an engineering firm to give you a recommendation?
Oh, that's the protocol of the board, yeah, I mean, I want everything black and white, I want it done right, you know?
So who would you like to hire?
Why, I guess, whoever I want, as long as they're licensed drainage.
Correct.
Yeah.
And they, they are, can go in and grab the report for that ditch.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, if I can get a copy of that, then I can get them to own it.
Yep.
So we feel like the county has no.
We need.
Should say anything on the right of way then, or just?
We have to okay it, yeah, what, uh, engineer recommends, and then it still comes back here to be okayed. So we don't have to emotionally blame the engineer. No, he's doing.
So, so you wanna allow him to choose his own engineer?
That's what we've done in the past on drain ditch.
It's actually not.
Well, tell me one instance that we didn't.
Well, Rain one thirty-two on, uh, January fifteenth, twenty thirteen. There was a motion by McGregor, second by Wymore, to appoint Besh as a committee that repairs are made in the middle of section fifteen of Prairie Township. That was for request number one. Of that year, for Jeff Burdick for a private crossing, says landowners will stand expenses for engineering and culvert, et cetera. But it was overseen by the board, it was not overseen by a private individual, and then the report came back to the board.
In, in all those cases, it was the person that wanted the work done did choose the engineer and we approved it, that's what we do. The minutes don't say everything that goes on.
Kyle, who would you recommend? I mean, sounds like you got somebody in mind already.
I didn't say I had anyone in mind. I'm just saying it should be the responsibility to the trustees, because.
Oh, I use, I use our, um, engineering firms that you guys. Use, you use Bolton, you use ISGE and use, uh, McClure, who else do you?
Someone on Estoril. I can't think of his name.
Some Westergaard.
Dickersons and Westergaard out of Estoril.
He's a nice guy to work with. But he's up in your area.
So if I choose one of those engineering firms, I don't see an issue with it. If you're already working with them.
It shouldn't be the landowner's choice, it should be a board decision.
It's gonna be a board decision, but.
Who does, uh, work the contract, and it's gonna do the work then too? Is the county gonna do the work because it lays in the county right of way? Like a driveway field approach? I mean, we're talking basically the same thing, other than we got a drainage ditch involved.
It's weak, if he chooses an engineer, we, we have to approve the report, and if you don't like it, you can disapprove of it when it comes in. I don't see, I don't see what the big issue is.
There is no big issue, that's the way we've done it in the past, you know, we'll approve the issue, we'll approve this.
Well, I mean, McClure already did the engineering on it, so.
Right.
It's broke down in sections, so they should be able to look right at it and say. You need a forty-four foot, eight foot pipe.
Right.
To get a twenty-foot crossing, whatever it is.
Correct.
You know, it's not gonna be a cheap project.
No.
I mean, it's, it's on my dime, I just want approval from the board to, to do it.
Yeah. Far as I'm concerned, you find an engineer that's qualified, grant back to the board.
Well, I think the, the issue is that it's a private drive, we don't, we don't appoint engineers for private title, it's the private drive.
No, it's crossing.
It's crossing.
So we. We appoint. But yes, do you know who you want to do it, you want Coors to do it?
What's the board telling me I need to do, I guess, if I use one of them engineering firms? That you guys use, I mean, if you have the confidence in them, I should have the confidence in them. I mean, if they're good enough, it's, they should be good enough for Vince Johnson.
No, they are good, no.
Why don't you go with the guy that already did the work on them? It works all there.
Yeah. That is.
Yeah, they wouldn't even have, you wouldn't have to do anything, they'd have it right there for Doug.
Yeah, I. I talked to other engineers that work for these firms, they said it's basically, you go get the. The, uh. Put, uh, McClure's in for the drainage, just wrecking it, and. He said, I don't wanna call the rubber stamp, but he said, you know, we gotta go by what they had to spec out of it.
Right.
Are they gonna inspect your dirt too, your fill?
What's that?
Will they tell you what fill to use?
Well, I'm sure they.
I mean, they've got so much clay, so much rock, so much this.
I'm sure they.
That we should do that.
Yeah, we're gonna, would it be all right if we appointed McClure?
Um, no, it's not okay, I, I wanna choose the.
Okay. But you.
I, I, I don't feel it's up to you guys to choose who I use for an engineer or who I use for a contractor. If you guys wanna pay for it, then you pick the engineer. If you don't wanna pay for it, then it's on my dime.
It is on you.
And if I pay for a licensed engineer that you guys currently are using, I don't see it as an issue.
Well, then, we'll. Put this on the agenda again when you decide who you want for an engineer.
Uh, if we put it on the agenda, then I'm coming with, uh, the engineer's report.
That's fine.
That I use.
Yeah.
For me, yeah, I mean, we can either approve or disapprove of the report, and, uh, I guess, I mean, at that time. Engineer.
I like a motion paid on it, so that. That I know what's up to my choosing who I use for an engineer, and then it will be up to the approval of the board to accept the engineering report.
But, and you're gonna, so you're saying you're gonna pay for the engineering costs and everything, is that what you're saying?
That's it.
Yeah.
Well, you're gonna have to, unless you guys wanna choose the engineer, then you guys take. And I find if you wanna pick the contractor too, they can, they, you can base your pass too.
You will. It breaks into. I'll move it, um, I request twenty twenty-two dash old six-three. Vince Johnson is going to pay for engineering. And installation, all costs associated with installing a crosspipe.
And that he should burn the report.
And that he will pick the engineer and, and bring the report to the board for approval or disapproval.
Correct. That's your motion?
Yeah.
You got all that down?
Want me to repeat it?
Yep.
Uh, Vince Johnson will.
Later.
Oh, okay, you got it, okay, I thought you said that you didn't have it.
Yeah, sorry. Approve Vince Johnson to choose and hire an engineer for Drainage Request twenty twenty-two's as zero six-three Drain four. And submit the engineer's report to the board for approval or disapproval.
And that he'll, he will, and Vince Johnson will be covering all the costs.
At his cost.
At his cost.
At his cost. I'll second Jack's motion, any more discussion on the motion?
I still don't know why we have a individual choosing.
Cause he's paying for it, he's paying for all the, he's paying for all the, the Drains District isn't gonna pay for it, he's gonna pay for it all himself.
It's always been that way in the past, Kyle, even though the records probably don't indicate that, we don't spend other people's money without their.
Do a roll call.
Do a roll call vote.
Stecker?
No.
Casey?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Class?
Yes.
Jax?
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, when. Get it on the agenda when you have your report.
Yeah, it shouldn't, shouldn't take long. An accounting employee is gonna, he's gonna, gonna do the work, Dale Colashe. So. Yeah, it is. Not just county employee. And stuff would be right, so he did the last crossing for us, so then agreed down, so.
Okay.
Unless I could get you to do it. Extra trucks and stuff.
It would be different. It's a business.
Yeah. We are up to discussion with Tommy Otter.
I thank you guys. I've seen this letter in the folder that I got another one, so I wanted to pass it on from Brad from Tyler. Uh, I sent this email to you, um. I think last week regarding the response of ICAB.
Yeah.
About the Anton. About the Anton suit that I found. So I didn't know if anybody wanted to see the letter.
It was in our folder.
Yes, I didn't know if you wanted to see the actual letter. Um, it did say that if we had a reply or if we used any other comments or any additional information. Which has looked at to let them know. So if you have any information, I'm happy to put it in. If not, um, I would just invite a way to notify, um, anybody.
Uh, we have to acknowledge it and.
Okay, so I made.
So that we can acknowledge the letter. Anybody want anything else on the agenda for that? But we'll acknowledge the letter. It'll be in green.
And right now we're getting ready, starting on valuations and doing finishing up our tip. Our county tip for Buffalo Township and the city's oil are turning in their tip stuff for me to reconcile. So we're busy with that. We're starting on budgets. I'm getting letters and budget worksheets out to all department heads today. Um, but the request that they be back December twenty-third so that we can do budget workshops the first week in January. So the weekend of third, fourth, and sixth, and seventh will be due on budget workshops. Done the next week and Jack will be gone the next three weeks. So we need to get those done. I'm also setting up dates for that top ward to meet before the first of the year and then. Um, have to do full sub office the week before January third. January second, because January second is the first official day for the newly and re-elected officials. But because that's a holiday for us, they have to be sworn in by noon that day. We'll do it the, the week before, so.
Twenty-seventh, you think?
Um, do you want it the twenty-seventh? The, the twenty-seven doesn't work for Karen Ben's group, so. I was looking at like the twenty, twenty-ninth or thirtieth, and I haven't contacted the clerk's office to see if there's any judges available yet. I wanted to check with the department and so.
Why don't you check with them and we'll have to all come in on. One of those dates, the twenty, twenty-ninth or thirtieth then.
Everything works so far. Kyle may be gone. And I talked to those two and they were both.
They both available? I can't see. You're gonna make it work? Could we give you a, a day or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And in those days.
When Kyle maybe gone on vacation, he's not sure yet, so we need to do a seven day.
Yeah, come in for like a couple hours just to close out business, potential business.
And that's fine.
Well, they're sure, well, they don't do the most. Yes, you have to, we have to do old business.
Yeah, if anything's left over, usually you, the old board sits there and you have to close out the year on December.
So you close the year out.
Is your, is your open just open over?
Yes.
I had a few a lot of time I wanted to ask you, but I can bring it back to you.
I, I was gonna bring that up in board discussion. We can talk about that there.
What is it about drainage?
It's about tile, but we got in and televised and stuff, so yeah.
Well, we.
I'm done.
You're done?
I'm done with that.
We can officially say we'll go back and do some drainage.
Yeah, so.
You want us back in here?
Yeah, do you want my?
Yeah, yeah. If you've got something on. We haven't closed out yet, so.
I'm telling, it's in green with, uh, six, it's flat twenty-seven X. We don't want you on map of it. I don't know what you want, but. I've been working on this thing since about two thousand, actually before two thousand eight and. I ended up putting my own name in underneath of the county name to grant it out. It's an eighteen-inch tile. It never takes water to. Or it was great to talk about like a six-inch tile. And I asked for it to be, uh, televised or dug up in that one time they had Thompson dig it up. And they said it was all fine. It was running water. It runs water really slow no matter what kind of water you have on top of the intake, cause I put big in base on top of it. It only runs off of like the six-inch tile. So I put my own main in which there was a problem for a while, but now I'm getting a more patterned tile, like people in a tile into it. And it's still the same way. So I finally asked the request to televise it. So I went in last spring from the blacktop in Hathaway and then they ran out of time, so they pushed that part was good. So they went in from my end state, it runs harder out of the backside of this thing than it does the front side. And they found out that an eighteen-inch tile has got a six inches sag in it. And there's one tile in there with six inches of garbage in it. So basically you're down with about a six-inch tile.
Yeah.
And there's six hundred and fifty feet in there that sags and where it's broke.
And.
All the middle of the fields. And I guess basically everything on this line or way either ran or I farm or I mean, they're very little, but I don't, I don't wanna really put the expense on land or. Because they just fixed the chunk that before. And I guess my question is, can I fix that six hundred and fifty feet with plastic? I'm gonna have to bet on the rock to get my six inches back, or is that something I have to the county do or what can I do? And I've got pictures of what I've done, like, I don't know if you wanna see some.
And we've got the televising and all that stuff, so.
The problem, problem is, is it's gonna have to be okay by the board if it's a district tile.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want a map over or do you wanna know what I'm talking about or?
Yeah.
I mean, I got the county map and I got a regular map. I don't know which one you want. It goes into Seneca one at the end of it.
The end of it's in Seneca?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right here is actually, it drops in on P thirty and I put a main in there if you can see that red line.
It goes to which grade?
I don't. Last twenty-four, I think is the name, the number on.
Does that go into?
Right there's a county tile running backwards.
Yeah, well, that's not unusual.
But on the other end, it don't really, but at the blacktop where it's supposed to run, it doesn't run at all. My twenty-four inches carrying everything right now.
So I guess my question is, did you take any elevations on the part that works? When they were.
Well, the one thing that's a little weird about this, and I'm gonna tell you, I ran my own twenty-four inch on tenth grade. And I'm probably a foot and a half under the county tile.
Yeah, it's, it's substantially under there.
Which is a little weird. But they say we got a six-inch sag in it.
Yeah, I haven't gotten any elevations, but from what we can see on the analizing and stuff there, but definitely issue.
But there is also an issue on sag along because we replaced the section there. They lost gradient too.
Yeah, well, my, my question is, is six hundred and fifty feet of eighteen-inch tile. Beyond the threshold where we need to have an engineer appointed?
No.
Right here. Right here, it runs. That's in green with six there. That's where I did it. And then in Seneca one, they had to replace that piece there.
Okay.
Because that also lost elevation. That was almost six inches too, if I remember.
Yeah, that was, that was bad as well.
I have an ugly one. And I've been having for a while. I mean, I put that main in two thousand eight.
So. But the problem that I have is pretty much everything that's on it is either I own or I farm. So I don't really wanna be a detriment to all the landowners. I'm gonna end the payment for it anyway, whatever.
Well, you wanna, you, you had a request filed on this, Tom?
So we had one for sure to investigate. I don't know, um, what specifically it said, but there was one to televise. So that's what we were working off of to check it out, but he's wanting to replace the section and. Take care of it that way.
Well, it's a county.
Rather than, rather than putting the expense through the courthouse, through the district, paying interest when he can't pay the bill. That he's trying to cut out the middleman.
You have trouble, this is the district tile. We can't cut out the middleman.
We gotta, we gotta, we have to, we gotta, we have to run it through here. It's a county type. The district's a paper too, yeah.
Well, it's gotta go through the district.
They will, it goes that way.
If it does, that's good.
That's the way it has to go. It's, it'll just be a simple repair and he can choose who he wants to do it. Who are you gonna have do it?
I don't know. I was gonna do it myself originally, but it's, uh, I have got that barn on.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he has to have insurance or you can't do it.
Yeah, you gotta have insurance and be a licensed contractor.
It's a short thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't you, to choose a contractor that's licensed and insured and put it on a drainage request and do it. It'll come underneath the threshold of what we can spend, so. Then it'll all be recorded.
Plastic dinner, have to go back to town, or what are you going? Right now it's plain.
Now you can put plastic. Take me plastic.
Long as you bet it in rock.
That's gonna have to be better than rock because you're gonna have to raise it six inches.
Yeah. If that's good with you?
That's fine with me. I just, I wanted to, that's just, that's why I'm here actually. Yes, I didn't know if I could actually do it myself or not, and that's why I am.
Not a county town.
Arch, you make a notation of that?
This is lateral twenty-seven X?
Yeah, it's twenty-seven X.
Yeah. Okay, I think that's all we need. We don't.
Yeah.
Motion.
No, not till the request.
Right.
Oh, do I turn this back in in the repair then? Go down on there longer?
Yeah, right.
Just do it as normal repair.
Do it as normal repair.
Good, thank you.
Yep. You're done?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay. Kyle, do you have any reports?
Um, yeah, I had a workforce development meeting yesterday in Storm Lake. We were talking about. Um, merging and all that stuff that I'd brought up previously. Probably will be looking at having it on the agenda sometime. Don't know if it'll be before the end of the year or not, but we're gonna have to be. Moving with those discussions, so. That's meeting I had got. IDDA on Friday. There's also their judicial district meeting on Friday as well, kind of at the same time, so. To see what I end up doing that way, but.
Mr. Casey?
Did you have any extra meetings that it said? Normal people call about this and that, the wind towers, the carbon line, it's my normal calls.
I've heard nothing about the lawsuit on someone. They haven't enlightened you any, anybody?
No, I heard that it's mostly the pipeline that moved now. It's getting. Instead of. The. Half to three-quarter mile will be a quarter to half mile from my place now. They're moving farther south is what I hear. It's the room right here.
Okay.
Cause there's a couple landowners that gave permission to go through and one landlord, I think told me gave permission. I talked to the guy in the grocery store the other day. He said, I haven't given permission. So it's, he said, she said.
Mr. Watts?
I had a care connections meeting last Tuesday afternoon. Um, we had sixteen calls in October for mobile crisis, which is a lot. And for some reason, October just seems like it spikes and they really don't know why for mental health cases. Um, our fund balance was two million five hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars and seven cents. Just went over a couple new contracts with Mary O and. And then we went over our annual report, which she has to certify to the state. Melissa wanted to come over in December sometime and go through the board and I advised her she'd probably be better to wait till January and come through it with the new board members. Like, so some tech damage she's gonna call and you try to get on the agenda for January. But we're approving the report. She's gonna send it to the state. That is all I have.
Jack?
We had a early childhood meeting. Uh, first we started with a finance meeting to go over all of the, um. Uh. Literacy grant applications and this year we have twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars, eighty-five cents. And applications last year we had sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, thirty-nine cents. This is money that goes to like libraries. Uh, for, uh, for lit, which is to do with books and, and programming and stuff like that. So then we went to the, the regular meeting, had a few new people, so we had introductions. Uh, we approved the budget and expenditures, uh, meeting times for. Twenty twenty-three were approved and we're, we now have a meeting at ten, nine-thirty for finance. If we have a ten o'clock for regular board meeting instead of at eleven-thirty and twelve. That seems to be working better for most people. Uh. We had a, we approved, had the last reading and approved the changes to the bylaws. Had a few, a few little changes there. And then the, the whole board approved the literacy grant applications. Uh, on family credentialing, um, they've given all the programs a one-year extension. Uh, they were. Uh, not getting it done in a timely manner, but they weren't getting enough support from the state, so they give them every, all programs a one-year extension for that credentialing. Uh, tuition assistance, uh, administrative update. There's thirty-four kids that are currently getting tuition assistance. Uh. CCNC. Still working. See who's gonna cover our counties, uh, what, because of, uh. Webster County, uh, it's been a change. Webster County isn't gonna be doing it anymore, so there's a couple of gals there that are kind of limbo right now with their job. Waiting this, waiting for everything to get approved and, and get them. Basically a new job with whoever's gonna be covering our counties. Chips off the blocks. They, they donated some, uh, wooden play, play blocks for home visitation. They had a picture of them. They showed us yesterday. It's kind of a cool old thing. Uh, then, uh, Kusuath Care Team and Loving Hands Nursery, uh, gave a. Presentation there currently serving, um. Four zero to one kids, five, one to two year, nine, two to three, six, three to four. Eight, four to five year olds and four or five year olds. Three hundred ninety-seven families are serving four hundred sixty-seven children. Twenty-six children were screened, thirty-three referrals. We had two parent workshops. Doctor Amy Shanson answered questions about children's health and pregnancy. They did a self-defense class. Uh, DHS inspected, did an inspection. They passed, posted a chamber coffee. Uh, two police officers visited, discussed their duties and services provided. The officers showed children the equipment they wear. During fire prevention week, a fireman brought a fire truck to show the children. The kids were able to see what a fire truck does and how fi- firefighters help. Ms. Vera has been volunteering her time on Mondays to read stories and sing songs. Public health nurse checked immunization records for children. And the AEA has visited to, to observe some of the children. And then, uh, fell off to growing healthy kids, uh, gave, uh. Gave theirs, uh, presentation, some of the challenges that they're at, they're facing or staffing. Trying to get more referrals, working on credentialing renewal. Uh, they did a kind of a neat program, touch a truck event in September, where about forty families came and they, uh. Had all kinds of different trucks from fire trucks to ambulances to. Whatever, and the kids were able to go out, you know, sit on them and, and kinda get to explain what, what they do. Stories of Sam is gonna be held December eighth from four fifty to six thirty. They had a success story that they went over. So that's kind of what they had and then, um. I guess that was it. I made a journey.
I didn't have any meetings last week. Is there anything else to come before the good of the pursuit coming? I didn't have any meetings last week, is there anything else to come before the good pursuit coming? There ain't nothing, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Motion by Flash, second by Casey.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Close and carry. Oh, it is way down there.
Would you guys?
Thank you, Marge.
Oh, sure. Starting this time line in this right here.
Really?
Yes, can.
How's the trapping going?
Pulled everything yesterday.
Did you?
Yep. Weather was gonna turn and I figured I wasn't catching up anymore, filled them all up. Hit them a little louder, said all three.
Be careful.
Get very far on the side.
See you in two weeks, Tommy.